All right, well, I think we got the crew. Um, so I'm going to call to order the December 21st, 2020 Royal Oak City Commission meeting to order. We're going to begin with a roll call. Mayor Mike Fournier here from lovely Royal Oak. Commissioner Prush?
Here in Royal Oak.
Commissioner Douglas?
Here in Royal Oak.
Mr. Macy?
Here in Royal Oak.
Mr. Dubak?
I'm here in the basement in Royal Oak.
And Commissioner Colo?
Here in Royal Oak.
Okay, we were thinking maybe Macy's or the North Pole, but definitely Royal Oak. Okay, all right. So, um, we've had a request to adjourn to go to closed session to discuss pending litigation, Coaches versus the City of Royal Oak. Is there a motion? Hold on, I lost my Zoom here, guys, I'm sorry. Is there a motion?
Yes.
Motion by Commissioner Prush, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Dubak. Commissioner Prush?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Mr. Colo?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubak?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, we're in closed session. All right, well, it's 7:32. It looks like we have everybody back, so we're going to resume the normal part of our meeting. I'd just like to, you know, make the remark that we were in closed session prior to this, with the exception of Commissioner Macy, she had recused herself. And, but she has returned for the regular meeting here at 7:30. So, we are going to begin with a invocation given by Commissioner Colo, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Colo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is our last gathering of the year. I think it's fitting that tonight is the Gristolos, the day of the year with the longest, darkest night. For 2020 has seemed to be the longest, darkest year. Friday, March 13th, where we made a date that many of us never forget, this is the date they started the realization of how dangerous this virus is and how it spreads to our state and community. Soon thereafter, we would shift to working and schooling from home, waiting in line for food, and inexplicably toilet paper, and eventually shelter in place. At times, hope to seem to, hope seemed to be a commodity that was scarcely available. But that darkness will not define our year. No, our year will be defined by heroes. Every time we think we have measured our capacity to meet a challenge, we look up and reminded that that capacity may well be limitless. This has been a time for heroes. Heroes who worked the front lines, fighting the virus to hospitals, stocking shelves with food, finding new ways to educate our children, and those who stay home even when it meant losing their jobs. As 2020 draws near an end, the streets of Haven are crowded with too many angels. Angels that were taken from us far too early. Angels that are our family, our friends, and neighbors. But tomorrow, tomorrow starts a new era of hope. Days are getting longer, but the vaccine family here, we know an end is in sight, and we must, we must stay vigilant in our fight. This will be the year we celebrate birthdays together again, the year we gather for holidays together, the year we can hug grandma. 2021 will be a year of reunion. If 2020 leaves us with anything positive, it's that we found a new sense of community even while being apart. Leaving the bad of this year behind us, I hope we continue to treat each other compassion, look after our neighbors, and always remember the essential workers who care us through the year. 2021 will be better, and for that, we give thanks.
Excellent invocation and remarks, Commissioner Colo. Why don't you take us up and lead us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah.
All right. All right, this brings us to item number seven on tonight's agenda. I see Mr. London, the presentation, presentation of the RUC 22 fundraising check to Vietnam Veterans, Chapter 154. Mr. London, welcome.
Thank you very much, and Merry Christmas and happy holidays to all of you. So, uh, we, this year, we, it's a very strange year compared to some of the previous years, but we, we were still able to, to put on a fundraiser for the Vietnam Veterans of America, Chapter 154. We ended up raising $756,090, which, given the fact that we didn't actually have a RUC 22 mark, march in person, was a pleasant surprise. People pitched in, they all, they got their, their beanies, and even though I was the only one out there actually marching on the Saturday before Veterans Day, people were there in spirit and they had, they had signed up. The Vietnam Veterans of America 154 does thing called, they have their Veteran Support Center, and this year, they are using the money for what they call Operation Christmas. It's 250 families, most of them are veteran and family, some of them are actually deployed soldiers where the families are still back here. They buy food, supplies, and even Christmas toys for the kids. So, they, they sent a letter of thanks to Royal Oak and the Veterans Events Committee, but specifically to everybody who, who helped out, bought their beanie and participated this year. So, we have a, our check that is going to be given to the Vietnam Veterans of America 154 for the amount, and we couldn't be happier. What we want to blow this number out of the water next year when we are all meeting in person and raise much, much more. It's such a, it's such a good cause, and it's good to know that they have some of the best delivery systems out there. One of the reasons we use them is because they have their, their food bank and their network of actually getting real supplies to real people as opposed to just some vague and amorphous help. So, we love supporting them, and, you know, we're, we're very happy that we can deliver this check to them this year and look forward to next year. And of course, thank you for everyone that showed up and attended our virtual Veterans Day ceremony. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, everybody who showed up for that one, and thank you for everybody who's online that actually tuned in for it, and look forward to providing an entire year ahead, hopefully getting back to normal.
Mr. London, thank you for all your efforts and for everyone that helped make this particular event successful, certainly raising in a, in a time of pandemic, some money for, for a much needed purpose. I'll just also add, you know, raising awareness, the beanies, whether it was an intentional, I know you're, you're an excellent, you have an excellent marketing mind, but that hat, I can tell you, I've, I've worn on, I mean, it's like my go-to hat right now, especially as it's cold, and, you know, socially distant, but we'll run into people in the street, neighbors, and they ask about, you know, what does that 22 mean? What is that on your head? Is that a Green Bay Packers, you know, is that your favorite, you know, strong safety? And I think, you know, unlike, you know, maybe a t-shirt that gets worn a few times and then eventually becomes something you sleep in or workout in, the hat, in my opinion, has really helped bring up this important conversation at some of the most unexpected times and really spread the word of the issue that's facing all of us, which is the, the number 22, the 22 veterans a day that, you know, sadly and devastatingly enough commit, you know, die by suicide. And so, you know, I just wanted to give you positive feedback on that, and I'm sure many other people are sharing that same story that I just shared where, you know, it has been a conversation piece. So, great job in helping not just raise money for important causes, but also, you know, raise awareness too.
Well, I appreciate that, and I thank the Commission for every, everybody's support that we've gotten from you all, and it's, it really has been, it's, it's been an honor to, to serve in this capacity, and I can't wait to do it again.
Excellent. Any questions for Mr. London? Commissioner Macy?
Oh, so when we were at our appointments committee last week, we saw another London name pop up on the applications for the Veterans Committee. Do you have any idea who that might be?
I think I might. We used to have a young man, Patrick Polis, who was our student liaison, who had been accepted to college and had left the post, and now a young man, who is my 16-year-old son, is actually the newest member of the Veterans Events Committee. He's going to be our student liaison from Royal Oak High School. He's a member of the Model UN and straight A student, and hopefully he'll bring a fresh, younger perspective. He's, he's picked up a lot from his dad, so.
Wonderful. So, Commissioner Colo?
I can't follow up the good news of your son being appointed to the Veterans Committee, but congratulations on that. I just want to thank you for streaming that, that walk. I mean, I followed along with you, and it was, oh, good. So, you know, thank you for doing it. I was a little winded watching you, but it was, it was a great, great event. Thank you.
Well, the, since nobody could be there, and nobody just wanted to watch 2.2 miles of video facing Straight Forward, if anybody hasn't seen it yet, what I tried to do was every couple of minutes, actually turn the camera around and give a brief talk of what people can look out for, certain things that, you know, certain precursor things that you can look for to spot the signs of people who are ideating, people who are sort of on the edge, and then, of course, what the, the larger issue is in the entire community. So, I'm glad that people watch that, and, and the good thing is, is once Facebook lives are done, they live forever. So, anybody who asks you about your 22 and your hat, you can point them to that video, it'll remain there forever, and they can actually see what we're all about.
Very good. And I think Commissioner Colo plans on, you know, participating live next year. He is wearing a 22-pound sweater, and we think that he's training for, for the RUC 22 next year, so.
David, I will walk, I will walk with you next year. Absolutely. Not with the sweater.
Well, I appreciate it, and, well, thank you again for all the support that, that you've given the Events Committee, and we look forward to handing over this check to the VBA 154.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. London, thank you to the members of the Events Committee, and thank you for everybody who participated and helped raise money and awareness. So, we're very grateful as a community. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Have a wonderful night.
Yeah, Merry Christmas, have a good night.
Happy New Year.
And Happy New Year.
All right, this brings us to item number eight, public comment. Ms. Schwanger?
Mayor Fournier and members of the City Commission, this evening we have two public comments that were called in. I'm going to use a different system for playing them for you, so, just one moment.
All right, thank you, Ms. Schwanger.
You are welcome.
Good evening. My name is David Trippiny, and I'm a resident at 600 South Dorchester Avenue. I'm asking that the city assist in taking action to prevent the installation of a Verizon Wireless 5G small site at 600 South Dorchester. I make this request due to the potential health impact on my family, including my unborn child, and the fiscal responsibility of the city to protect the investments that residents make in this community. First, the new utility pole is 19 feet from the north side of my home in the public right of way. Assuming the antenna equipment is 10 feet higher than my home, that places it approximately 21 feet from my master bedroom. It's my understanding that Verizon places a warning clock on the pole instructing its technicians not to come within 15 feet of this active installation, even temporarily. My pregnant wife and I will be sleeping 21 feet from this antenna for eight hours per night. I've asked Verizon to share calculations based on the exact power and frequency characteristics of the site on the potential exposure to my family in relationship to the FCC or any applicable safety standard guidelines. I and any other residents of the city deserve these assurances, especially exposure we may be susceptible to. Second, no other poles exist on the south side of Sixth Street where this one is. It stands out, and is, and due to its close proximity to my residence, will surely have a negative impact on my property value. I believe it is in the power of the City of Royal Oak to help prevent this installation from moving forward, at least until Verizon can ensure the safety of the impacted residents and that our financial investments in this community are protected. I understand the setback requirements found in Royal Oak zoning ordinances don't apply for any public right-of-way issues, but our own ordinance, ordinance is also required that such facilities should not be demonstrably injurious to neighborhoods or otherwise detrimental to public safety and welfare, shall be located and designed to be harmonious with the surrounding areas, shall comply with applicable federal and state standards relative to the environmental effects of radio frequency emissions. While I may be the first resident voicing this concern, I am positive I won't be the last. The city needs to set a feasible precedent on how these installations impact the community, even if that means raising the issue to a state level. The vague nature of existing state laws enable Verizon to do as they please, potentially putting in public, part is put into public and hands-waived for their own financial gain. Overall, I support the installation of necessary 5G infrastructure in our community, but not in a manner that has an overtly negative impact on any single residents. Thank you for hearing my concerns, and have a good holiday.
This is Dave Gillum calling from the Village of Wolverine Lake to wish the City Commission and the staff Merry Christmas and a very Happy New Year. This has been a challenging year for all of us, and I wish you nothing but the best in 2021. Take care and stay safe.
And that concludes the public comment for this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Schwanger, and thank you for the folks that called in, and it was good to hear Mr. Gillum's voice again. That was a very pleasant surprise, and we wish you a very happy and safe holiday season, Mr. Gillum. All right, that brings us to item number nine, which is the approval of the agenda. If anyone wants to make a motion to approve the agenda, perhaps they could add as item, I think it would be 17. Item 17, a discussion on CODIS versus the City of Royal Oak. Commissioner Prush?
I'll move approval of the agenda with the addition of an item to discuss settlement of pending litigation, CODIS versus City of Royal Oak.
Okay, we motion by Commissioner Prush, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Dubak, discussion on the agenda. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Colo?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Mr. Prush?
Yes.
Mr. Dubak?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, we have an agenda. All right, that brings us to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything off the consent agenda? Commissioner Dubak?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to pull item E.
Okay, item E, approval of demolition contracts, okay. Anybody else? Is that, Commissioner Colo, do you have your hand up? Okay, Commissioner Colo?
Sorry, new camera angle. I'd like to call item B.
I'm sorry.
B as in boy.
B as in boy, okay. Bravo, all right, and that is confirmation of Mayoral appointments. Anybody else? Okay, the consent agenda now consists of City Commission meeting minutes from the 23rd and December 7th, claims from December 15th to December 18th, approval of purchase orders, approval or approval of purchase, new canine, approval of Michigan Department of Transportation Construction Funding Agreement 2021, Crooks Road resurfacing improvements, grant of easement for Detroit Edison Company at Normandy Oaks Park, grant of easement for Baker College for earth retention and tiebacks, approval of amendment to Woodward Dream Cruise License Agreement with Jackson's Five Star Catering, approval of First Amendment to Joint Operating Agreement with the Michigan Red Sox for Memorial Park Diamond III, and receive and file the following non-action items, the November 2020 Investment Report, Ex-Row Evaluation Report, Retiree Healthcare Plan as of June 30th, Government Accounting Standards Board Statements, number 6768, Accounting and Financial Reporting for Pensions, June 30th, 2020, and Government Accounting Standards Board Statements, numbers 74 and 75, Accounting and Financial Reporting, the Post-Employment Benefits Other Than Pension, June 30th, 2020, and Greenhouse Gas Emissions Inventory and Related Reduction Targets Status. Is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Macy, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Dubak, discussion on the consent agenda as presented? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Dubak?
Yes.
Mr. Prush?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Mr. Colo?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, that, we'll start with, in order, item B. Commissioner Colo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I pulled this item tonight just because I want to recognize the people who are on this. This is your appointment to the Commission for the Arts and the Library Board. The Commission for the Arts have three familiar names that have been serving that board for a long time, so congratulations to Jody, Jason, Denise, but the Library Board has a new member, is a former student member of the Planning, Parks, Rec, and Senior Services Commission, Maya Harris. So, just congratulations to her on her first full term on a board, so that's a very exciting night. So, with that, I move approval of the, or the confirmation of your appointment.
Motion by Commissioner Colo, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Macy? Discussion. Mr. Macy?
Just following up and thanking Ms. Harris for her service on Parks and Rec as well. She's also on the list to get appointed to a full appointment to that, which is well-deserved after having attended all these meetings and contributed, but not being able to have a full vote in that, in that meeting. She's very interested in the Library Board, she's considering becoming a library technician, she's a recent grad from Royal Oak High School, so we're super excited to have her on both of those.
Yeah, very excited to get some, and I'll tell Commissioner Colo this, Commissioner Dubak and I, actually, when Commissioner Marley was elected, we were, one of the papers reviewed and said, it'll be nice to have some young and fresh blood on the City Commission. Young!
We were 35, he was 33.
I know, I know. So, Commissioner Colo, now that you are, have departed the Library Board, it'll be nice to get some, some young and fresh perspectives from Ms. Harris, so, not to make you feel old, but, you know, you are wearing a bulky sweater with a Christmas tree as your background, so it'll be a much added addition to the Library Board.
And a dad ties, I mean, I'm just going all in.
All right, um, anybody else? All right, I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Colo?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Mr. Prush?
Yes.
Mr. Dubak?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, and this brings us to item E, which was the demolition contracts. Commissioner Dubak?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make sure I'm understanding everything that led to this recommendation. First of all, a little perspective, you know, from those more in the know, and you understand this better than I, around how, I mean, this is a really wide range of bids, and I just want to make sure I'm understanding, are they all bidding on the same understanding of the body of work, where you have, I mean, the winning bid is, you know, 40% of the highest bid, and I feel like that's a much wider range than we usually see? And then their original bid was for 509, and then it says after subsequent conversations, it's a 593. So, I'm wondering, were those to clarify the scope of work, and, and were the other bidders engaged in those type of conversations to clarify the scope of work? It looks like the bid was adjusted after, after their initial bid was made, and I'm just trying to make sure I'm following.
Now, Commissioner Dubak, you're absolutely right. After we received the initial bids, we actually have post-bid reviews with the low bidders, and at that point, we needed to make some clarifications, primarily with the actual site, there's a lot of remediation that has to be on-site, and we have asked them, whenever practical, to be taking materials that can be recycled off-site and to do that. And so, Adamo, why their bid was much lower than the others is frankly, this is what they do, and, and we had a lot of bidders that frankly did not have the proper materials that were submitted to the city. So, after the subsequent clarifications with Adamo, and I had conversations with both Kolasani and Plant Moran, they were 100% satisfied with that scope of work, that they were going to do everything that the City Commission has asked us to do pertaining to the remediation first and then demolition of these buildings.
Okay, so then there was not other higher level or desirable things that these higher bidders were offering, it's just that Adamo knows what they're doing, and they know how to get it done efficiently and properly.
Correct. It's a very tough time to bid work right now, and you have a lot of people that are putting in very high bids on a lot of different projects, because work is tight and they can kind of name their price right now.
Okay. Okay, I mean, that answered my question, I don't know if anyone else, any questions before?
Mr. Macy?
So, we did receive as the, as a commission, a letter with concerns about Adamo's work, their quality of work and their history, and I feel in these cases always like I'm a little bit at the mercy of, of everyone, because I don't have any background knowledge in this, like, I don't know anything about Adamo and their, but it did, it, you know, the fact that we got such a message made me worried, and I wondered, does the city have a lot of experience with this contractor, what's, what has our experience been? I don't know, Mr. Fenn, if you saw that message as well, but if you had any reaction to that?
I did not see that message. Adamo is one of the, the largest demolition companies in southeast Michigan. I'm not sure if City Royal Oak has used them, I'm not sure if the City Royal Oak has had a demolition job that is this large. I have talked to the Ilitch organization and others that have used them before, and they recommended them without qualification, so, again, speaking with our experts and consultants, Plant Moran and Kolasani Construction Manager, I'm completely confident in this bid recommendation.
Thank you.
Mr. Colo?
So, Commissioner Macy is correct, we did receive a letter on this, but we received that letter during our closed session, so it's, I don't think any of us have had really time to review it or go through it, but if we're seeing that Kolasani and Plant Moran, our city staff, Ilitch Corporation, if there's that much, that many recommendations behind it, I'm, you know, I'm going to be inclined to follow the city staff recommendation on this.
Mr. Dubak?
Yeah, likewise, I don't know the individual who sent the letter, I don't know anything about, you know, their concerns, but I do know that we've been working with our, our project manager and with Mr. Smetton and, and all of our team through this project, and I think it's been, by and large, a, you know, pretty good experience considering the circumstances, the complexity of it. So, I'm satisfied with the answers to my questions, so I'll move for approval.
Your motion by Commissioner Dubak, second by Commissioner Colo, discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Dubak?
Yes.
Mr. Prush?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Mr. Colo?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, all right, it gets us through the consent agenda. We're now to item 11, which is the first item on our regularly scheduled agenda tonight, which is the acceptance of the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020 Financial Audit Report and Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. The Caffer, I see Ms. Rudd's here. Mr. DeCamp?
Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioners. Yeah, we are requesting that the City Commission accept the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for year ending June 30th, 2020, as well as the Independent Auditor's Financial Report. We should have, there is, the principal from Raymond, who was the auditing firm with us this evening, as well as the chairperson for the Audit Review Committee, Chairperson Manton, and I'm not sure if Mr. Manton wants to speak, but Mr. Baldorman is going to make some brief comments about the audit, if that's okay, and then I will make some comments about more of the noteworthy items that are in the Comprehensive Annual Report. It is, I believe, almost 200 pages. It would take quite a while to go into any detail, so, again, I'll just comment on the things that I believe that you'll find of more interest, and then take any questions, if that's okay?
Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Rudd.
Okay.
So, we'll, we'll hand it over to Mr. Baldorman, and I'll also ask Mr. Manton to make a few remarks after Mr. Baldorman as well. He's done a great job chairing this committee over the years, and, you know, glad that he's here tonight, so he can offer his perspective as well.
All right, well, thank you all for your time tonight. I just wanted to offer a few comments about the audit process, the overall results, and, and just some things to look out for in the report. We did, I guess I'd like to start by thanking We did, I guess I'd like to start by thanking Julie, Tony and the whole team for working through this year. Definitely was a unique year for an audit. We did complete the audit completely on a remote basis, so we actually didn't come to City Hall at all, as much as I wanted to come see the new City Hall and see the new digs. But, you know, we did it completely remote. And I think, while it wasn't ideal, I think it worked fairly well, considering the circumstances. During the audit, one of the things, and when we met with the Audit Review Committee back on November twenty-fourth, we were actually still, we still had one item that we were still looking at that was affecting the financial statements, that the accounting for it was a little unclear. We had to get some clarification, working with the county. There's been, there were some complexities this year surrounding the timing of when funding got released and got awarded to municipalities. And so what was, is not included in the financial report is a significant amount of federal dollars that came through, that you may have expenditures that are being, that are being, the grants will eventually reimburse the amounts for, but because the award dates were after June thirtieth, those amounts aren't reflected as revenue in this year in the two thousand twenty financial statement. So they'll be recorded in twenty twenty-one. And they'll also be included in the single audit in twenty twenty-one, so they didn't get audited as a part of the single audit this year. So overall, though, so, and at the time of the Audit Review Committee, that the amounts had actually been recorded, we got some clarifications from, from the city, or from the county, and determined that the amounts shouldn't be recorded at that time. So, but we did discuss that with the Audit Review Committee at the time, and explained what the differences would be. So overall, the audit opinion that we issued on the financial statements was an unmodified or a clean opinion. That's what you're looking for in audit, so that you can rely on the information that's contained in the report. Would point out that a clean opinion is that the financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects. So it's not an absolute, you know, the amounts are perfect, but it's amount, the amounts are not materially misstated, so that you can rely on the information. We also conducted a single audit, like I talked about, the federal awards for, for much of the coronavirus relief funds and other funding that's come out will be included mostly in twenty twenty-one. But you still had your major grants that we looked at, like we have in prior years. We looked at the Community Development Block Grant Program and tossed, tested that as a part of the single audit. We did not have, for the federal award side, any findings. And so it was a clean audit, unmodified opinion on internal controls on compliance. We did have one item that we had to include as a finding this year for the audit. We, it was determined to be a significant deficiency, which is a lower level than what a material weakness would be. Basically, under standards, if there's, if we detect something as a result of our audit that requires the financial statements to be adjusted, and management didn't catch something, and we catch it instead, it automatically gets considered to be some, a controlled deficiency and has to be considered for the audit. So there was an item that was, that we detected as a part of our procedures. The amount did get corrected, so the financial statements were corrected for this matter. So, you know, there's no real further corrective action that has to be done, because the financial statements were adjusted. But there was that one item this year, but that was the only item that was included as a finding. So that's all that I was specifically going to go over, but would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Baldeman. Mr. Maiten? John, how are you?
Very good. Yeah, I thank Julie and Tony, especially for preparing the material for Nate to make the, our job easy and understandable to go through this. As Nate mentioned, we went through this on November twenty-fourth virtually, and we're able to recreate the same excitement we have in this meeting in person. It's always fun going through two hundred pages of stuff. But Nate leads us through it, and we did discuss a couple of items that Nate had mentioned. And, you know, to agree as a committee to, you can ask me to accept the report, or suggest to the commission to accept the report. So that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Maiten. Questions? All right, I don't see any questions. Does anyone want to make an acceptance? Okay, Commissioner Douglas?
Yes, I move we accept the audit report and annual financial report as submitted.
The motion by Commissioner Douglas, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Prush, discussing. Okay, with none, I'll just add, thank you, Ms. Rudd, thank you, Mr. DeCamp, Mr. Maiten, Mr. Baldeman, and all the whole team that works tirelessly to, you know, account for every dollar this city spends, and to make sure we do it in the right way, and that we have reliable statements. So, you know, this commission, this body, along with staff, can make important decisions that impact our lives every day. So it takes a, takes a lot of people to, I mean, we get this book, but the amount of work that goes into it, and the amount of review that goes into it, both from citizens, staff, and auditors like Raymond, is a lot of work. And it shouldn't be taken very lightly. It's, it's something that's very important to running our city. In fact, one of the most important things. So we're very grateful for everyone's service, and appreciate everything you do. And, and we'll see this again next year. All right, I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Colo?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Prush?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubach?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, perfect. Thank you, Mr. Maiten.
Thank you.
All right, this brings us to item twelve, which is the acceptance of the City of Royal Oak Retirement System Seventy-second Annual Actuarial Pension Valuation Report, June thirtieth, twenty twenty.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a request for the commission to receive the actuarial report for the pension system, and also certify the, the board's, excuse me, accept the board's certification for the contribution for fiscal year ending, or fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-one, at a minimum amount of eight million, six hundred fifteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars. And I would like to request to alter that resolution that's been provided. The resolution has July one, twenty twenty, and it should say July one, twenty twenty-one. So if I could please request that that resolution be amended. Last Friday, the retirement board met and went over with the cities, or excuse me, the retirement board's actuary from Gabriel Roder and Smith, the document. Some of them are more noteworthy items in the document, although I do recommend that everyone read the entire report. There is a wealth of information in that report. But some of the more noteworthy items, the unfunded liability increased to eight point six million dollars for pension. That's approximately three hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars over last year's contribution. And when I say last year, I mean the current fiscal year. That's a four percent increase, and mostly due to lower rate of return, higher pays that then, that were assumed by the actuary. And there are more retirements than the actuary had assumed. In addition, what's also located, or also provided in the report, the eight point six million dollars that will be required next fiscal year, that is going to be contributed by taking sixty-eight percent of payroll for police and fire, and thirty percent of payroll for general employees. When I say that, I also mean the members of, of the, of the system. It does not mean people in the, in the DC plan. So basically, we'll be taking pensionable wages for police and fire, multiplying that by sixty-eight percent, and that's the contribution that we'll be making to the trust. For the general employees, we'll take pensionable wages. For the active members in the trust, multiplying by thirty percent, and that's a contribution. So the, based on almost a fifteen million dollar projected payroll for those active members that are still working, we anticipate to collect the eight point six million dollars next year. The unfunded accrued liability is ninety-four and a half million dollars. And a couple of other things I would just like to mention. The markup rate of return was two point nine percent for last year. That generated a loss, and that was a positive two point nine percent. That generated a loss of six and a half million dollars. Because what we do is, we look at the two point nine percent relative to the assumed rate of return, which is seven point two five percent. So if you don't meet seven point two five percent, then there was a loss. And so that loss, again, equal to about six point five million dollars. So what happens is that gets smoothed over a four-year period. And you'll find this on page, I believe in past years, the commission found this page very interesting. Page A five. And what that shows is the prior year's losses or gains that get incorporated into our next year's contribution. So three years prior, we take twenty-five, twenty-five percent of the gainer loss, and that gets allocated towards calculating next year's contribution. And this twenty-five percent of the six point five million dollar loss that was just generated as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty, is going to be allocated. So that's a net recognized loss of nine hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. And if you notice also on that page, we, next year, we're going to have our only gain in the four years drop out. So that was helping us. So hopefully, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, we're going to have a nice gain that we can average into the smoothing method, because we are having our only gain out of four years drop off in our smoothing method for next year. And the final thing I'd like to mention, pages, or excuse me, page A eleven, as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty, we had two hundred and one active members versus five hundred and forty-three retirees collecting benefits. And our last year pension payroll was seventeen point six million dollars.
Thank you, Ms. Rudd. Questions for Ms. Rudd on the pension? Commissioner Macy?
I felt like the market was good this year. How does, how is it that Royal Oak seems to be doing badly?
We take the gainer loss as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty. So at that point in time, we take the market value.
Yeah, after a certain period in November, the market did make sizable, momental gains. But as of June thirtieth, I think there's a lot of concern in general. And doesn't necessarily mean we're all invested in the Dow Jones or S and P five hundred. You also got, I mean, the board spends meticulous hours, you know, picking and choosing mutual funds and fund managers and things of that nature too. So that's a good question, Commissioner Macy.
It's possible, oh, sorry, it's possible this next year will be positive.
Yeah, it would have to be, I mean, if it was a low point in June, and, you know, we hit a high point next June. But if it happens, you know, the high point happens July first, you know, I mean, the market jumps four thousand points. You know, that's the tricky part of dealing with this is, you know, it's smoothed over four years at a cutoff day, not necessarily smoothed every day. Drives you, drives you nuts. Over time, over a hundred years, it makes sense. Commissioner Dubach, I think you had your?
Yeah, as you know, that our manager did make note of that, that we, you know, our report gets cut off before the market started rebounding. So we got the worst of the COVID dip. And, you know, while you believe there's reason to be optimistic in the coming year, you know, nothing is certain. So I'm curious, Ms. Rudd, as far as, you know, what we're going to be contributing above and beyond what we did in the last budget cycle, can you quantify that for us?
Yeah, that'll be about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, or four point three percent over the current year's contribution. Yeah, and this year it's about eight point two million.
Okay, I just wanted to, so we understand the numbers in context, you know, understand that that's, that's the boost that would most likely be coming out of general fund?
Correct, well, police and fire, and since the general fund really just does a sweep on whatever else is needed in revenue for the public safety fund, yes, that's correct. The biggest hit will be the general fund.
And given that, you know, the future is certainly uncertain, given that the news is volatile, and the news around COVID and vaccinations versus a new strain in England, and no one knows what this is going to do to markets and our returns, is there a reason to seek to contribute beyond that amount? Or should we stick with the plan and hope that over a four-year smoothing, where we've got the right target?
Good question. I know there was some discussion, I believe, the last few years, I'm contributing more. And it, it just depends, do you want the money in the general fund fund balance for the rainy day situations? And then also, if, you know, the market increases significantly, that's when you're adding to, you know, the market when it's high. So yeah, it's, it's a good question, and that's, it's a big answer. But it's something to consider, for sure.
I remember we were having that conversation last year, when the market, before COVID, when the market was rallying, and everyone was expecting a correction to come. And we were like, well, we're not going to double down now, when there's certainly a dip. We'll buy when things are low, and maybe we miss that dip again. But I feel like it's probably a conversation we want to delve into more around budget time.
Yeah.
Yeah, we certainly can do that. In addition, you know, we were looking at, you know, the forecast for the general fund fund balance, how it was decreasing each year. I will say that the last item we were just on, talking about how June thirtieth, twenty twenty ended, our use of fund balance was only off, relative to the original budget, by about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we're talking about out of forty-two million, that's how close it was. So we've really sharpened our pencils on estimating our budgets and our forecasts, they're not as conservative. So if those do come true, that forecast, you know, we're seeing a significant use of fund balance just for regular operations. So, you know, we have to keep that in mind if we're thinking about moving more money over to the pension trust as well. Yeah, I will say also, though, just to give you an update on this year, and Mr. Baldeman touched on it a bit with the CARES Act revenue. And I mentioned it briefly during the first budget amendment. We did an amendment to recognize one point six million dollars in CARES Act revenue. So we only had approximately a one point one million dollar use of fund balance in the general fund. And I had mentioned, that could probably almost net to zero, because we were anticipating some county grant money. But we weren't a hundred percent sure, we still had to apply for it. We just, we had to actually make sure we were eligible for it, and that was the monies that Mr. Baldeman was discussing. We have received that grant, so, you know, we did qualify for all of it. So that's going to be, that's going to help the use of fund balance number, as we briefly discussed during the budget amendment. So this year, the general fund is not coming in as anticipated with a significant use of fund balance, but that's because of the surge of the CARES Act money.
Right, and just to clarify what you said earlier, it's not that our use of fund balance came in exactly as expected. It's that our general, our general fund spending came in with, within that tiny margin of what we budgeted. Is that what you're saying? within that tiny margin of what we budgeted. Is that what you're saying?
Um, when you actually netted the revenues and expenditures, yeah, I was just looking at use of fund balance. Our revenues did not come in as as well as expected, but our expenditures came in better than expected. And when those netted out, like I said, the contribution originally budget or sorry, the use of fund balance originally budget was about two point seven. And it came in like two point eight something. So.
Okay. So we have a little stuff to delve into around budget time then. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Wish to make a motion?
That could be amended budget or excuse me.
Yes, a motion that includes the amendment suggested by Ms. Rudd to reflect July twenty twenty-one.
Thank you.
We have a motion by Commissioner Dubak. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Colo. Discussion. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubak?
Yes.
Mr. Prush?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Colo?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you, Ms. Rudd.
Thank you.
All right, this brings us to item thirteen on tonight's agenda, which is the Planning Commission recommendation for rezoning of eight oh three North Main Street, second reading. I see Mr. Twing here. Good evening, Mr. Twing.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the commission. You may recall that you did see this project at your November ninth meeting, I believe, as first reading. It is listed on the regular agenda this evening under second reading because the vote at that November ninth meeting was not a unanimous vote. So it wasn't able to go on the consent agenda. Very briefly, it's a recommendation to rezone the planned unit development for a three-story, thirty-five-foot-high multifamily building with with eight units and sixteen parking spaces on the ground level. It does include some public art that is planned on the setback area of Main Street. The site here, if you're, if you recall, is at the northwest corner of Maine and Austin. And it also includes a rain garden along the west portion of the site. Unless there's questions, I'll stop with that.
I know we hashed a lot of this out in the first reading. Any questions for Mr. Twing? Any motions? Commissioner Prush?
I'll move approval of this on second reading.
Motion by Commissioner Prush, second by Commissioner Douglas. Discussion.
Um, you know, I'll just say one thing I've been having a really hard time with is the public benefit of APUD. And since our first reading, I I've gone to a couple of courses and I looked more into it. And I don't think that just adding housing to our housing stock is a public benefit. And I, you know, I I look at the RAS, the city commission has determined that this is a recognizable material benefit to the city residents. And I believe it is a great benefit to the developer. I believe the people who will live in these units will have a great benefit. I don't see how it is a benefit to the city though. So right now I'm not at a yes vote.
There's feedback coming from your microphone. Thank you.
You just didn't like what I was saying.
Um, so the planned unit development system was really designed for projects different from this one. It was really established to allow multi-use development on larger sites. You'll see the, the, what, the northeast corner of Maine and eleven mile. That's a planned unit development. But what's happened along the way is that our our multifamily zoning definitions are very much out of date. The planning commission has been looking at some revisions to those. Meanwhile, developers who want to build according to to meet current market demand and current architectural standards and and best practices in smart growth are coming to us with planned unit developments because it's the only tool that lets them open the door for a discussion and a negotiation over what they can build. Technically, to be a planned unit development, this building would need a commercial on the ground floor. And yet staff has reported to us over time that buildings that have that kind of single unit of commercial have have not done well. It's not a viable model. So while while yes, when you look at a giant development with multiple uses, you do look for public benefit and you've got a lot of leeway to negotiate for those public benefits. But here, without really any sort, I mean, the only tools that the planning commission has to negotiate with are those that are in the building ordinance, things having to do with setbacks, the amount of landscaping on a property, building height, et cetera, et cetera. But so so yes, this is a planned unit development, but to say we're looking at it for vast community benefit beyond the tax value, which is a community benefit. And beyond the fact that it takes an underutilized property and puts dense development, which we do want in a major corridor, which is a very appropriate place for it. I think makes it a desirable option for this corner or for this site. And I certainly will be supporting it.
Anybody else? Commissioner Dubak?
I remain supportive for all the reasons that Commissioner Douglas is so clearly articulated.
Anybody else? Want to make a motion? Commissioner Douglas?
I move approval. Oh, I'm sorry. No, I think Commissioner Prush already made the motion, didn't she?
Did she? Oh, that that is right. I'm sorry. I, my mistake. Okay. Any other discussion? All righty, I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Colo?
No.
Commissioner Macy?
No.
Commissioner Prush?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubak?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion passes. The conclusion of that project from this body's perspective. All right. Thank you, Mr. Twing. This brings us to item fourteen, which is the approval of the Appointments Committee recommendations. So I don't know who wants to take the lead from the Appointments Committee meeting that took place. I don't know if you formally nominated a chair or someone just wants to take the lead on this one.
Mr. Mayor, I was actually ambushed with being the chair, so I guess I could take the lead here.
Oh, wow. Chairman Cola, yours.
Thank you. So the appointments can be met on December tenth. Reviewed the applicants. We had over a hundred applicants for the different boards and committees. It was a, it was a really hard time choosing everyone. So from the committee, I just want to say thank you to everyone who did apply. Continue to apply. You know, with so many applications, I think it's great to give us, let us know why you want to be on a board, pick a board. Just a future advice, people pick one, two, you know, maybe five boards, but you maybe specialize yourself a little bit more. And let us know why. I think that helps us determine who's best fit for a lot of decisions.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Colo or Commissioner Colo or the rest of the Appointments Committee? Commissioner Douglas?
I just want to thank the staff, Ms. Hallis and Ms. Braswell for the work they do. As Commissioner Cola pointed out, we had more than a hundred applicants. They wrangled them into a spreadsheet that make it made it very easy for us to make our assessments and score them. So hats off to the Clerk's Office staff.
Anybody else? So there is a oh, Commissioner Douglas?
Yes, I'll move approval of the appointments to the vacancies. Because we actually, we have sort of three segments here, which we need to deal with separately. The first segment is appointing people to vacancies and I will move approval of that portion of the committee's work.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Macy. Discussion. Commissioner Colo?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, actually, if it's okay with my fellow committee members, I would like to call the Rehab Board of Appeals back to committee. I think we've had some new applicants come in. And I think we want to fine tune that one before this body votes on it. So I would make an amendment to a motion to amend this Commissioner Douglas's motion to remove the four or three rehabilitation Board of Appeals appointments.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Colo. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Prush. Okay, discussion on the amendment. Commissioner Prush?
Commissioner Colo, I just want to be clear. Did you say that there have been other resignations from the Rehab Board of Appeals that we need that the committee needs to deal with?
No, ma'am, I'm sorry. There's a, there's some more informations come through, some more applicants. I just want to make sure we have all the right people in the right spot that reconsidered the information that was available.
Okay. Thank you.
So essentially, from what I understand, Commissioner Colo is that you want to delay the appointment of the Rehab Board of Appeals appointees. So you have time to just to cover some new information and new applications.
Correct.
So this motion that we, this amendment would have passed would essentially move with the vacancies with the exception of the Rehab Board of Appeals.
Correct.
Okay, I, I mean, unless the Rehab Board of Appeals is of a urgent necessity to meet with, you know, quorum issues or whatever, I don't have an issue if the committee meeting needs to take more time. Commissioner Prush?
I'm the commission representative to the Rehab Board of Appeals. We generally don't have a quorum problem and we don't also need to meet every month. It depends on whether or not there's an application that is pending, that that needs our consideration that has gone through the staff process and cannot be done and dealt with administratively, has to be done by the board itself. For example, the December meeting of the Rehab Board, which would have taken place this week, was is canceled. We did meet in November and also in September or October, but not in September, if I'm recalling the calendar correctly. So it's we should have a full board definitely in place. But we generally don't have a quorum problem. And so if we're missing a member or even two members, we probably should be able to still operate.
Okay. Commissioner Colo?
First of course, I believe we can get this done in the next two weeks and have this back before the city commission at the first meeting January, if that's okay with Mr. Bray.
And the Rehab Board doesn't meet until a latter part of the month. It's usually the second or third week of of the month. So that should give us plenty of time.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, call for a vote on the amendment. Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubak?
Yes.
Commissioner Prush?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Colo?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, so now the back to the original motion, which is as presented by Commissioner Doug's list, sans Rehab Board of Appeals. Any further discussion on this motion? All right, I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Colo?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Prush?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubak?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Reappointments. Commissioner Colo?
I move the acceptance of reappointments as listed.
Okay, well, we have two sections of reappointments, right?
Unless the clerk tells, I mean, do we have to do if we're doing one at a time, we could start with the second one in our packet. The Animal Shelter Board Review, Civil Service Board, Construction Board of Appeals, Crime Prevention Council, Historic Commission, Historic District Study, Environmental Board, Traffic Committee, Veterans Event, and Building Board of Appeals.
Now, motion by Commissioner Colo. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Douglas. All right, discussion. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Douglas?
You're just messing with us, aren't you? Yes.
Commissioner Dubak?
Yes.
Commissioner Prush?
Yeah.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Colonel?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And that leaves us, you know, the final reappointments that require special call out for the additional expertise they bring to their boards. Is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Prush. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Macy. Discussion. Commissioner Macy?
Yes, for this one, we had talked about using these very sparingly in terms of extending beyond the appointment length for for this special expertise. We did receive a letter from the assessor referring to the Board of Review and specifically stating that the necessity of having experienced people and that in other municipalities, they don't actually have terms that expire. So that's maybe unique to us. And the importance of him of having this steady board and Premier Verzaghi, I don't think I need to say more about. She's sort of the the blue that holds the Historic District Commission together and has been for some time. So that's why we feel they have special expertise and experience required for these boards and commissions.
Absolutely agreed. Okay, any discussion? All right, I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Colo?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Prush?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubak?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. You're with me here while I get my agenda straight. All right, this brings us to item fifteen, City Manager Breaks, Confirmation of City Manager Appointments to the Downtown Development Authority. Just break.
Mayor Fornieri and City Commission, I am presenting to you for your consideration the reappointment of Matt Riley and Lori London to the DDA Board of Directors. So these are reappointments. And recommending two new appointments of Mr. Michael Keith and Ms. Amanda Luan to serve on the board. So there are two sets of terms that the reappointments of Matt Riley and Lori London and Michael Keith to serve a four-year term through the end of twenty twenty-four. And Amanda Luan, who is filling the term of a board member who resigned. So this will be a one-year term that'll conclude the on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. So this is presented and recommended for your consideration for approval.
Any questions for Mr. Bray? Any motions? Motion by Commissioner Prush. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Colo. Discussion. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubak?
Yes.
Commissioner Prush?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Colo?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, this brings us to item sixteen, second to last item, which is the discussion of the process to fill the city commission vacancy and initial review of applications received. Maybe what what I'll do to kick this off is, and I didn't discuss this with Ms. Hallis up front, but maybe she can or Mr. Bray, whoever feels most appropriate to walk us through sort of the applications received, some of the numbers and how that process went, just to kind of get the ball rolling on this one. I know we got the emails with the applications and all that, but maybe it's a good idea just to kind of kick off a statement here for the public.
So I can start, but I'll defer to Clerk Alice to fill you in on the particulars. So per the the city commission's direction that we accepted applications through Wednesday and last week, I believe it was December sixteenth through five o'clock, City Clerk Alice did contact those individuals that applied previously and asked them to confirm if they wish to maintain their application. And there were a number that that wanted to continue and there were some. Uh, and there were a, a number that, that wanted to continue and there were some that, that opted to no longer participate. In addition, there were new applications that were submitted. Uh, we use the, the same form that Commissioner Colo applied and was a successful applicant. And, um, and the specific numbers, so I'll defer to City Clerk Callis to, uh, give you some of those stats, uh, as I know she has that information readily available.
Hi, City Clerk Alice.
Hi. Um, we had thirty-one applicants. Um, yes, I did reach out to everyone who had previously applied and they did send me an email back and either said, please resubmit the application I already had on file or they went ahead and they reapplied online. And everything that we did receive is attached to the agenda and, um, that was, that was all that we have.
Wonderful. Any questions for Ms. Hallis or, or, uh, Mr. Bray as far as how we, um, you know, the results of the process that we prescribed? I mean, it was very similar to the last vacancy that we filled. Uh, except for, you know, obviously the nuance of keeping some of the applications still alive because they applied so recently. Any questions? Okay, and thirty-one's a good number and certainly, uh, again, very happy to see that so many people, especially in these challenging and what are really divisive times at the national level, I'd even argue at the state level. Um, you know, where we have people that are willing to step up to the plate and, you know, put their name out there, put their careers out there and put their faces out there, um, to be criticized by their neighbors, to be, um, have to be an advocate, to listen and to make tough decisions. Um, it's very warming to see so many people in our community, uh, feel a sense and, and a desire to take ownership of, of the very place they call home. So we're very grateful. Uh, I, I mean, I can tell you, it's, uh, you know, it's, it's not always in our past where we've had people lined up to, um, to come and, and fill the shoes of, of somebody who, um, has, uh, is no longer on the commission. In this particular case, the, with the resignation of, um, Commissioner La Bassar and his moving to, to the northern part of the county. Um, you know, has created this vacancy and, and so soon after the unfortunate loss of Commissioner Gibbs, we've had to fill the seat again. Uh, another seat. And so we're very grateful for the, for our community members, our neighbors, our friends, uh, for stepping up and, and putting their names out there to be a part of the, the process here. Um, I know last time we, we, I mean, this is always one of the, you know, challenges that we have. Um, you know, looking and, and because of the, you know, rightfully so, because of the Open Meetings Act, we don't really discuss things as a group and like maybe if you're hiring somebody at your company or applying for a job, you know, a lot of things, people talk behind the scenes and you know, you get some candidates lined up. Um, it's much more of a challenge in, in this public setting here. So, um, I don't know how or who wants to kick this off, uh, and we'll just kind of take it from there and see where it goes. Commissioner Dubak?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, you know, I think the, the process we followed, uh, last time worked well just to see if there is some consensus. You know, we can just, uh, kind of go around the table and, and, and talk about, uh, our top three and see if any candidates rise to the top, if there's, uh, you know, potential to moving toward a decision this evening. Um, I, I think it's important, you know, as, as you said, to recognize that it's different than in a hiring situation where, you know, we could be convening and, and exchanging notes. You know, this is the first time we can, we can really talk about it as a group. And, um, you know, you talk about in a public forum and, um, as you said, you know, I, you know, respect for anyone that wants to step up and serve. Um, and so I would say anyone, you know, whose name necessarily doesn't get to my top three, that doesn't mean that there weren't great things that they could bring to the table. Um, there's a lot of really strong, uh, resumes here, people with a lot of great ideas, real genuine desire to serve. Um, I just want to preface that, you know, before we go further, that, um, there's a lot of folks here that I think, you know, where they put their name on a ballot, would, would get a lot of votes because they've got, you know, really real, uh, vision to offer. Um, but as we try and move forward a decision to fill the seat for eleven months, um, for the next election, you know, I think there's a couple of folks, for me, that rise to the top. So if, if everyone's comfortable with that process again, I would say we just go around, uh, speak a bit to our top three and, and go from there.
Okay, Mr. or Commissioner Dubak, why don't you start us off then?
Okay, I will do that. Um, so the three, um, that landed at the top of my list here. After, you know, considering just, you know, the thoughts that they had shared about, um, you know, what are the most, uh, you know, important issues that we're facing right now? What are the three long-term challenges we have? Um, and also considering, you know, whatever special skills or expertise that they're bringing to the table. Uh, do they have a unique perspective? Maybe that's not already represented here, a unique skill set that, that one of us doesn't have. Um, or something that's just so powerfully relevant to the decisions we have to make, right? So, um, looking at those things, uh, the three that rose, uh, to the top for me were, uh, Timothy, Timothy Slusser, who is, and this is in no particular order. Um, uh, you know, I really liked the words that he wrote, you know, understanding, you know, who we are as a community, what our challenges are. Um, you know, knowing that we have to, you know, not just be thinking about the immediate term, but, uh, you know, who we're going to be in five, ten years and, you know, twenty years. And, you know, strong business tech, uh, real estate and a long, strong connection with the MEDC, which I thought brought valuable perspective. Also, uh, Mr. Jason Giddinger, who, uh, we all, I believe, know. Um, who has been, you know, dedicated so much time to the community, um, you know, really well connected and networked, a small business owner. And, uh, I think we all know his dedication and passion for the city. Um, so certainly he would be, um, an asset. And then, uh, actually, uh, the woman who, uh, was at the top of my list last time, um, perhaps even a smidgen above Commissioner Colo, uh, is Monica Hunt. Um, who's, uh, who is an attorney who's worked in municipal law and bonding, um, who just, you know, the things she had to write, you know, really, uh, spoke to me, strong focus on environmental sustainability. Um, what we have to do in, in considering that in our infrastructure and development, uh, decisions going forward. So for, for me, those three rose to the top. That's not to say there weren't a number of other qualified folks here, but, uh, those are the three names um, that, that I'm really strongly considering.
Okay. Anybody want to go next? Mr. Colo?
Uh, um, sorry, I was, you didn't have eleven pages to get on the City Commission, so I, I did something wrong when I filed my application. Um, so, uh, once, just like, uh, Commissioner Buck said, so many great applications, so many great people here who have, uh, dedication to our city. Um, and it, it's, it's hard to get down to just three. Um, so, uh, my list here, um, Lisa Smith, uh, is one of my list. I think, um, she had great ideas on public and health policy, I think are pretty pertinent right now. Um, so that, that really made her stand out, um, among me. Um, Jason Gager also is on my, uh, top three. Um, Jason is a community asset. Uh, he's on, um, the, um, the Arts Committee, um, is, uh, kind, you know, volunteering all around downtown, part of the chamber, small business owner. Um, and he knows how our city government works. I think Jason would hit the ground running, um, and be a great addition here. Um, and then, uh, Monica Hunt was also, um, in my top three. Uh, she, uh, I think she has a lot of great things going for her, um, practicing municipal law. Um, even though we have, uh, two lawyers already, I guess the third wouldn't be terrible. Um, but, uh, but practicing municipal law, she understands how a city government works. She understands how to work with the county. Um, she, uh, she's on, uh, um, a foster care board, um, working with the county to place children um, in safe settings. And she talks about challenging a status quo and that's, you know, I, you want people that are working for to, you know, moving things forward and, um, you know, finding the, the new mousetrap. So, um, she, she rounds up my list. Um, just out, I, I need to mention Mitzi Hoffman. Um, Mitzi has a great resume. Um, she has great community service and has been a long time volunteer at Royal Oak. So she, she, Mitzi, you just missed my top three tonight.
Anybody else? Commissioner Perush?
Um, City Clerk Alice mentioned that you all are hearing feedback from my microphone. Are you still hearing feedback or is it okay now?
It sounds better now.
Okay, I moved my phone away. My phone was causing bizarre things to happen. Um, I have four on my list. I had tried to win it down to three and I couldn't and I was baking sugar cookies at the Four Year Old and I'm like, I'm stopped. I'm just going to pick four. Um, the, the first person on my list also is Jason Giddinger. I work with him on the Royal Commission for the Arts. Um, he's an extraordinary individual, very talented. Um, but what impresses me about Jason is that he is a team builder. Um, obviously in an arts commission, when it's full of artists, you can have a, a whole variety of opinions about what should be done. Um, but he is a, a way of pulling us all together and making this work very effectively as a team. And I think that's an extraordinary talent to have and OD and has set to us as a commission. Um, the second, these are in alphabetical order. Um, the second person on my list is Mitzi Hoffman, who has worked for years with the Royal Public Library. A lot, a lot of volunteer activities with the Friends Group and with other activities in the Royal Oak Library. Um, obviously many of us know her through that work and I think she'd be a real asset to the City Commission. Uh, the third person on my list also is Monica Hunt, who's been on the list of the first two commissioners who spoke. And what impressed me about her application was her work with other committees. Not necessarily municipal committees, but other government committees and other committees and other nonprofit organizations. And if you can work effectively in a leadership role as a committee, it means you know how to build consensus, you know how to move projects forward. And that's what we do. We try to build consensus and move projects forward here in the community. And I think that's an asset. As well as her, her, her educational background, of course, is very strong. Uh, and the last person on my list is Kurt Ronoverstein. Uh, most of you know him as very active with the Royal Oak Foundation for Public Education. Uh, you see him volunteering for all kinds of activities to support the foundation. Uh, very, very strong supportive of not only educational, uh, activities in the community, but community activities as a whole. We see Kurt everywhere and we know that he volunteers for lots of different types of things. Um, and he's, he's tireless. Uh, and I, I think that, that would be an excellent also addition to the City Commission. Um, so those are my four.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Macy, Commissioner Douglas? Commissioner Douglas?
I'll, I'll go. Thank you, Mayor. Um, other commissioners have, uh, mentioned the qualities that I too found compelling in a couple of my candidates. I will say that experience with gov, in government, I think, is going to be helpful. This is someone who has to come into this office and be here for eleven months. Perhaps they'll run for office again, perhaps they will not. Um, but government processes are unique. Um, you have to understand that the wheels of government sometimes turn slowly. And so my three top candidates, I think, all bring that perspective to the job. And so in, I, as I'm, uh, emulating Commissioner Perush's method in alphabetical order, uh, my candidates are Monica Hunt, whose virtues have been suitably extolled here. Um, Melinda Lofton. Melinda is a, an attorney, so there we are. Um, she worked in Washington DC with a number of governmental agencies, um, largely in an ethics role. Um, and I think, um, her focus on ethical government, especially, I think, given the, the sentiments we heard over the summer from people in, in Royal Oak, people across the country. Um, and our desire to create a, uh, uh, or expand really our human rights ordinance or broaden it a bit, I think she'd bring an interesting perspective from that. And if you do a Google search, you'll also find out that she's in the Royal Oak High School Hall of Fame. So, uh, Melinda, uh, would be another choice for me. And then, um, uh, Commissioner Dubak mentioned Tim Slusser. Tim worked for the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. I think that knowledge will be invaluable to us. He's now working in, uh, alternate energy, um, businesses, which I think will bring a good perspective and, and good information to the commission. Um, so those are my three choices.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Douglas. Commissioner Macy?
Yeah, so, um, when we did this two months ago, three months ago, very recently, um, I felt the weight of picking someone who I didn't know off of this list. Um, and that was, felt uncomfortable for me. And now we're at, um, at the same point again. Um, but this time I feel like, oh, we need some new blood to shake us up. Maybe someone who's not someone that we all know and um, would kind of fit in maybe even too well. Um, perhaps we need someone who will, who will shake us up and be a little bit, bit of a disruptor. So for that, for that reason, um, I picked people I don't know, um, and I reached out to them and have spoken to my, the three candidates I'm going to propose. And I think that they would all be excellent in this role. Um, so two of my top, my top two are Julie Ishak and Michael Doraskovich, neither of whom have been spoken about yet today. Um, they both seem to be bringing different qualities of experience, Julie in the healthcare role and Michael, who's been in Royal Oak Community, uh, service for quite some time. Uh, and I think that they would both be great at this, but, um, part of the reason I wanted to go last is that I saw a bit of a pattern coming and I'm going to do what I did last time and say, my very top choice, the candidate that I thought spoke, spoke to me the most, um, from this list, uh, was also Monica Hunt. So I will move approval of Monica, move the appointment of Monica Hunt to this position and see if we can get discussion going there. Unless...
Well, we, there you go. Commissioner Macy always, uh, just looking with motions, um, although we need disruption. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Macy. We have a second, second by Commissioner Dubak. Okay, um, the motion is, uh, is to, um, appoint Monica Hunt to fill the vacancy. Uh, as Commissioner Macy did say, the, um, Monica's, Ms. Hunt's name did come up, uh, on every single list. So, um, let's open it up for discussion. I think this is a good place to start. Um, Commissioner Douglas?
I, I, actually, Mayor, you probably want to say this, but I'm gonna, I'll say it. Um, uh, some of you may know that, uh, Ms. Hunt has been appointed to the Planning Commission and clearly that was because the mayor, um, did his research, looked at multiple candidates as planning commissioners and thought she would be a good fit there. So his, and, and I've, she's participated in one meeting with us, but, um, the mayor's vetting of her, um, and her suitability for that role, um, I think actually reinforces my, my good opinion of her. It does mean we'll have to appoint a replacement to her. Um, but I, if, I think we have some, I believe the mayor has some good candidates for that. Um, so I'm pleased to support this motion.
Commissioner Dubak?
Yeah, I'm, I'm grateful to Commissioner Macy for, for biting the bullet and, and moving us forward here because I'm, I'm at a point where the, not just three on my list, but pretty much everyone, everyone else mentioned rounds out, you know, my top seven or eight. And so there's a bunch of really qualified people that I would be more than satisfied to serve with and I think would do a great job. Um, Monica Hunt is certainly, um, a top contender and I, I'm happy to support her and, you know, I served with her for these eleven months, should she be appointed. And, um, and then we'll see if, uh, she wants to stay and the community wants her to stay.
All right, Commissioner Perush?
Um, just two things very quickly. Um, I also want to reiterate what everyone else has said, that, that the quality of the applications, not only this time, but also when we were considering the appointment of, of Commissioner Colo, are, is just extraordinary. And I'm delighted that a number of them have taken the next step, who were not chosen to actually apply for boards and commissions so that they can get into, um, the city government, um, in a, in a different way. Um, but will be able to contribute all of their skills and talent and resources and that to, to us as a community in, in a variety of different ways. Um, and it was, and I'm sure you all felt this, it was darn hard to narrow the list down to just three or like four. Um, because originally I had thought Mike Doraskovich was my, was a fifth person, um, in my list. I've known him for a very long time. Um, his kids and my kids are about the same age and we were kind of in different kinds of activities in the church together a very long time ago. And, um, we get a wonderful family and he would be a remarkable, uh, commissioner, as would a number of others whose names were not even mentioned this evening. Um, it was extraordinarily difficult to narrow it down, to adjust the names that we mentioned this evening. Uh, we could be happy with any, any one of them, any one of them. So, um, I'm delighted that the process went as well as it did. Uh, we've got some great people. We've got great people in our community who are willing to serve. I'm very, very happy with the way that this has all turned out.
Thank you, Commissioner Perush. Anybody else? Anybody else? Commissioner Dubbuck?
Thanks, Marissa. I know I already went, but I did want to reinforce one thing that, and the top of her comments, which is, you know, when I go back and forth between these top folks, I think there is value in bringing someone that clearly has experience and expertise and a lot of volunteer experience on governing bodies, but not a civic insider. And, and I think that's something that, several of these candidates, candidates are, including Ms. Hunt, who has a tremendous amount of volunteer work and experience on governing bodies, whether nonprofits and things. But she's not, you know, one of the people in the mix in city business. And I think there's value in that. If anyone's still on the fence, I think that's definitely a value add.
Commissioner Colo? Commissioner Colo, you're on mute, sir. Or your sweater is so loud that we can't actually hear what you're saying at the moment.
It's the sweater being too loud. So I just want to say, I see why last time Commissioner Labasser had listed seven people, when you guys were listing five. It is very hard to get this list down. There are so many qualified people. And I, you know, having been someone who applied, I know how hard it is to sit here and listen to the deliberation. Likewise, I also know that I, you know, I thought Ms. Hunt was, would have been a great choice for my spot just a couple of months ago. I thought she had a serious, I thought I had a serious chance of not getting a spot for her then. And I would be very happy to see her get the seat now.
Thank you, Mr. Colo. Now I'll just add similar sentiments as everybody here. You know, easily 10 people, I think I could sleep at night knowing that this city was in, you know, good hands with an additional commission member. All of them mentioned tonight, community volunteers, people that bring diverse opinions and backgrounds and expertise to this table, have a willingness to serve for the right reasons. Just an incredible pool of people that should make every single person, not just the applicants, but every single person in this community proud that we have such a great stock of individuals that care so much about our city, which is probably why our city's doing okay, even, even in these rough times. You know, we come together and we have a great sense of community and, and we're doing, we're doing okay. And so, you know, for me, you know, I think this, this has got to be a decision that, you know, all of us can, can get behind. And while I have, you know, a top three, all of them have been mentioned, it's, it's hard to, you know, put aside the consensus that we see with, with Ms. Hunt. Certainly for me, having the opportunity to speak with her before planning or before putting her on the Planning Commission, pointing her to the Planning and Commission, just, you know, frankly speaking, our resume is one thing. But actually, you know, using that limbic part of your brain to ascertain and verify the information and talk to them about their dreams, ambitions, and how they view the world was a very encouraging experience for me. And I really enjoyed my time and the time she gave me to speak to her. And certainly I can tell you that her, her resume matches her energy and her ambition to do well by the community she calls home. And so I think that she'll be, if this passes, an excellent, you know, contributor to this body and an excellent contributor in 11 months. And if she continues to, you know, serve the city in any capacity, she'll, she'll certainly leave a positive mark for years to come. And so I'm thrilled that we have such great candidates and I see the consensus here among the team. And, and, you know, like I said, my, my picks, I don't know, you're talking fractions of a hair, but all of them were on the list anyways. So, you know, we have one that seems to be a common denominator. So unless there's any other discussion, I'll call for the vote. Okay, we'll start with Commissioner Douglas.
Yes.
Commissioner Dubbuck?
Yes.
Commissioner Prush?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Colo?
Yes.
And I vote yes, unanimous. Ms. Hunt, welcome to the team, if you're watching. Thanks again for everybody that applied. Very grateful. And like we said, we're going to have openings on planning, clearly, coming up. And, and there are always opportunities to join a number of very important and meaningful and purposeful boards and committees in the city that, you know, help keep us making the progress we're making. So thank you to everyone. All right. This brings us to the last item on our agenda. I saw Commissioner Colo raise his hand real quick. No, no, Commissioner Colo, that, that isn't Santa Claus. You can't ask him what you want for Christmas, but. Commissioner Colo?
I'm sorry. Oh, yes.
Oh, fast, okay. All right. So this brings us to item 17 on tonight's agenda, which is the settlement or settlement related to COTSS versus the city of Royal Oak. We have Mr. Jopik sitting in here tonight from Ms. McLaughlin. What I'll do is I'll just hand it over to Mr. Jopik to kind of frame this up and then we'll take it from there. Mr. Jopik, can, can you unmute? Sorry. I know we got a couple. Yeah, there you go, almost.
Been on mute for quite a while. I totally forgot. Thank you. This is the item of business. It's the pending litigation that was discussed with legal counsel in closed session at the beginning of the meeting this evening. It is a pending case and it does involve a settlement proposal. In connection with that settlement proposal, we had a, counsel had a discussion and I would like to recommend a motion for city council's consideration at this time in connection with that matter. And that motion would be to approve resolution of the COTSS versus Royal Oak litigation in accordance with the terms of the settlement agreement as presented and recommended by legal counsel in closed session.
Great. Christian Prush?
I will still move.
Okay, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Douglas, discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Colo? Mr. Macy?
Abstain.
That's right.
As a class, as a potential class member.
Okay, that's right. I apologize. I should have given you the opportunity before we brought this agenda item up. But thank you for abstaining. Commissioner Prush?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubbuck?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Jopik.
Thank you.
All right, any other business for the benefit of our fine community this evening? Mr. Colo?
I'm sorry, I'll ask a question now that I was too distracted last night before to ask. Mr. Break, will Ms. Hunt join the City Commission at the first meeting in January?
I would assume so, but we'll make, we'll reach out to her right away and find out what her availability is. And so if it's any different than that, then I will let you know.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else?
I'm entranced. I may just sit here for a while.
Can we wait so I can go get all my stuff too?
I found this in my wife's teaching basket over here to the right, so.
I'm running out of props. We didn't get to do our group caroling this year.
I know, I know. I'm still, I'm sorry. I know I should be running this meeting, but every time I see Commissioner Dubbuck in that vest with that hat, I'm just, you know, the distraction level is just so high. It's unbelievable. It's like a cat seeing a shiny thing, you know, you just, it's going, what's happening? Mr. Colo, my goodness. There is Colo under the tree.
Still not good, still not good.
Yeah. Those are rough.
Well, I guess on, on behalf of everybody here, you know, we just want to wish all of staff and everybody that day in and day out comes in to, to keep our city running from DPS to library, our courts, folks at the M and M Center, of course, our PD and fire departments, as well as everyone from finance, treasury, accounting, clerk's office. You guys did an amazing job this year, considering all the obstacles and challenges ahead of us. And, you know, we're just so proud of the work that you've done. And Mr. Break coming on board, hitting the ground running. We're really grateful for your arrival and certainly look forward to what will hopefully be a better year next year. And, you know, want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas.
God bless us, everyone.
Yeah, all right. All right, if, if someone wants to make a motion to adjourn, we can call this meeting lights out. With the motion, Commissioner Dubbuck?
With a Merry Chris, all to all, I've moved to adjourn.
All right. Second by Commissioner Macy, discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubbuck?
Yes.
Commissioner Prush?
Yeah.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Colo?
Yes.
And I vote yes. We are adjourned. Wishing everybody out there in our fine community, wonderful, happy holidays. Stay safe, be safe, think safe. And we'll see you next year. God bless everyone. And thank you for everyone for bearing with us tonight. And have a good week. Take care.
Let's go play it out.